Okay, folks, welcome back to evening two of our seven council meeting in February. It is six P M. So we will get started and first up, right back to where we left off. I will ask for report number twenty six from the C A O. Sorry, before we do that, I'll just confirm if we have quorum.
Yes, Mayor Patterson, we have quorum. Missing at this time are councillor Bowham, councillor Dory, councillor Holland and councillor Ossanic. From staff, we have Lanny Hurdle, Chief Administrative Officer, Paige Agnew, Commissioner of Community Services, Craig De Jarden, Acting Commissioner of Corporate Services, Peter Hugo Boss, Commissioner of Business, Environment and Projects, Brad Joyce, Commissioner of Transportation and Public Works, Desiree Kennedy, CFO and City Treasurer, John Bolignone, City Clerk, Jennifer Campbell, Director of Heritage Services, Lisa Capener-Hunt, Director of Building and Enforcement, Paul McClatchy, Environment Director, Jenna Morley, Director of Legal Services and City Solicitor, Tim Park, Director of Planning Services, Karen Santucci, Director of Public Works and Solid Waste, Ian Semple, Director of Transportation Services, Kyle Compo, Manager of Licensing and Enforcement, Janet James, Deputy City Clerk, Alan McCloud, Deputy City Solicitor, Julie Salterkeen, Manager of Climate Leadership, Jeffrey Walker, Manager of Taxation and Revenue, Elizabeth Fawcett is our meeting host and Marcus Vagacy is providing technical support. Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, now we will ask for report twenty six from the C A O.
Moved by councillor Neil, seconded by councillor Kylie, that report number twenty six from the Chief Administrative Officer recommend be received and adopted clause by clause.
Okay, clause one, conference center feasibility study outcomes and next steps. Any discussion? Councillor McLaren.
Thank you. Could I get some clarification on exactly what the the staff administrative commitment would be to finding new permitted use for future development first?
See you.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Mayor. So the recommendation that's in front of council tonight is one directing staff to look at options of how a conference center could possibly be accommodated through potential redevelopment of block four. And as councils aware, block four did have a complete review done back in two thousand and fourteen. There were guidelines that were approved at that time where multiple uses were being recommended for this site. So no surprises or commercial uses that were recommended, such as restaurant use hotel, which we talked about in the past. Also residential use was one of the recommendations for this particular block. So what we would do is we would look at the potential of incorporating a conference center space within that development and then looking at what are the options in terms of operating model and financial models, whether they're partnerships, whether they're standalone private sector, what are the options? And we would bring that information back to council.
So that first part that speaks to putting in a conference center, how is that in any way different than say, somebody asking for an O P amendment that adds a new use for a particular designated land?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, the project would need to go through an official plan amendment and a zoning bylaw amendment regardless of council's decision tonight or a future direction to issue an R F P, for example, for the property. The property would still need to go through an independent official plan and zoning amendment.
So this is something different than that. All right. So we're this, how much staff time is going to be needed to facilitate this particular supportive of a private consortium that comes to do this?
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Mayor. So the primarily it will be in my office, councillor McLaren. I will obviously be looking for some support from some of my colleagues. In terms of staff time, I think there's been a lot of work that had has been already done through the design guidelines approved in two thousand and fourteen. So we would definitely rely on this great work that was approved by council at the time. And we would also work with our colleagues at Tourism Kingston and CAP to help basically with some of the more detailed information around the conference center.
Okay, so it doesn't sound like it's too onerous on your part. Is that correct?
That would be correct.
Okay. And the second part with the regards to the official plan and bylaw amendment, I can see that that would be kind of normal. With regards to the options, this is, I guess, my feelings on some of the options that are less agreeable and some that are more agreeable. And I hope you just take it as more for your information, if that's okay.
So councillor McLaren, I'm gonna jump in on that because we could have a whole discussion tonight. And and I think that that's not what's in front of us. The direction is simply to come back with options. And I think that would be the time to have a discussion. So I think I'm gonna, I think I'm gonna have to roll that part of the discussion out of work because I think that that's just simply not what's on the table. If for future discussion, for sure.
Okay, so I won't. Maybe I can take it on a sideways based on something in the report, if that's okay with you. So the report reads to me a bit like a creative writing exercise and say, feasibility of something that may or may not be able to happen. I would submit to you that the feasibility of something that isn't supported by entirely by the private sector is probably a reason why it's not. And if it needs the public to help, it may not be the best deal for us. And that's basically it. Thank you.
Your next is councillor Strong.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Patterson. And I did want to thank them for that report last night. And I am prepared to to support the the recommendation to direct staff to to do some further work. I certainly have had twenty four hours to think about it or a little bit less and did receive a call today about that. And and I'm very intrigued by it. I appreciate the report and certainly my, although I understand the caution that we might, might, we might feel. And from our our view of this, there's so many synergies that could come together with this kind of development that I, I, I think that we would fail to look a little bit closer at this and the potential there for the entire city of Kingston could benefit from this. So there's lots I could say, but I, to keep it short, I, I think that we should identify options that it says to support the feasibility of this conference center. Thank you.
Next is councillor.
Thank you, worship. And I just, I want to give you like a personal example, if I could. It's when I was before council, I was a president of a provincial organization. And although we couldn't have our conference here because, you know, the group was too big, I was able to bring the executive here. And, you know, the executive was so intrigued by Kingston, thought what a perfect place it would be to have, you know, to have our, our, our large group conference. But the facility wasn't there, you know, and and I just think that this is, I, I understand that in the past that maybe, you know, everything was kind of Toronto centric. But I do think that there's options now for people to really look at outside of Toronto. And it certainly sounds like the, like the business plan is there. So I really highly endorse this. I think this is the right direction to go into, obviously very cautiously and carefully, which is what I think staff is going to present to us. But I, I really think this is a good, a good direction for us to be going. Thank you.
Thank you, your worship. I'm, I'm willing to progress to the next step as well. I think we heard some good points last night, but also we know our population has just grown seven percent. A lot of people have moved in to Kingston from the G T A everywhere as businesses start to do hybrid models and go back to work, you know, for some days. Maybe then there's opportunities for those off days where we don't have a conference that those breakout rooms could be rented out by people that need to, you know, touch base with the head office, you know, in a business setting, you know, quiet time, not at home, but not also going all the way to Toronto or Montreal, you know, renting out an office. So we heard the consultant company last night say for the Ottawa Congress Center and the Toronto one, they had to look creatively and try to make a profit. And what else you can do for those rooms where you're not actually holding a conference? And with the hybrid models out there now, that could be an opportunity for Kingston. Thank you.
Next, Chappelle.
Thank you, your worship. Um, I, I I spoke about this a little bit yesterday. And this to me is a recycled plan that has come forward and come forward and come forward. And they're just keeping to chisel away at this in order to finally hopefully get support from council to have a large expenditure, commit the city to another huge expenditure that I don't think is in the best interest of the taxpayer, city of Kingston. I would be interested if this was to go to a international R F P, or not R F P, but an R F Q, just see what kind of proposals would come out in private partnerships. And in addition to that, be willing to entertain the notion of putting the Leon Center on the market because we still are paying for it and still paying for it. And it doesn't make us any money and we're subsidizing it every year. So if we are to be an attraction center, the city does not need to be involved with that. The private sector was there, I think it would be appropriate. And I don't like the idea of swapping this land of value of valuation of seven to twelve million dollars, whatever the land is, and leveraging that to the college so that they can then leverage it to a private sector. That is too messy. We lose control. So you do a nice clean break, have something come forward that does a world renowned destination marketing opportunity. That's fine, but not this piecemeal stuff of upper level, lower level partnerships, because those are over.
So I'm gonna step in, I'm gonna be stepping to be fair because I cut councillor McLaren off. So so councillor Chappelle, that's a perfectly good discussion to happen at the right stage. This is not that stage. So to be consistent, since I asked councillor McLaren not to get into discussion about what models you would or will not support, it's only fair to stop you there as well.
As is presented, then, your worship, I will not be supporting this proposal.
Okay, next is councillor Neil.
Thank you very much. I think we need to keep in mind that this is just the first preliminary step towards quite possibly a project that the council of the day, because I'm not even sure it'll happen in this term, will have an opportunity to consider. Like councillor Hill, I had an experience where I was on the, I was a former drama teacher and I was on Code, which is the Council of Ontario Drama and Dance. I had nothing to do with the dance portion. And I was tasked as the vice president to organize their annual meeting. And I was living in Kingston, teaching in, in, in Brockville at the time. And I tried to organize it here in Kingston. And there just wasn't enough space because it was happening. I couldn't use Queen's facilities. And the ambassador, we were just a little too large for the ambassador. So we ended up having it in Brockville, of all places, with a lot of community support. And it was very, very successful. And the thing is, we are uniquely situated. Most conferences happen in Ottawa, they happen in Toronto and occasionally in Niagara. And people love coming to Kingston. And so, so we lost that opportunity, but we had people coming from northern New York, from right across Ontario, but a lot from eastern Ontario that didn't normally go to that, to that conference. And it was, it was very successful. And I think it would have even been more successful if we'd had the capacity to do it in, in Kingston during the school year. And so, so I, I'm going to support this, give it an opportunity, see where the planning takes us. So, so I will be supporting this. Thank you.
I thank you. Deputy Mayor, would you take the chair? Oh, deputy mayor's phone is not here. So I'm gonna ask former deputy mayor councillor Chappelle, would you pick the chair, please?
I do, and I recognize you, your worship.
Uh, thank you. I, I'll be very brief and certainly will make sure that I, I buy the same guidelines that I've given to other speakers about what is and is not on the table tonight. I think as other councillors have said very eloquently, this is about whether or not we want to explore options for a conference center. I think that we need to consider as council the importance of the due diligence and expression of that interest. I would like us all to reflect on what hundreds, if not thousands of workers in the tourism and hospitality sector here in Kingston have been through over the last couple of years. What in a number of small tourism related businesses have been through over the last two years. And this is being brought forward by Tourism Kingston, which represents our tourism industry as a potential way to bring growth and bring recovery to a sector that's been incredibly hard. So I would just like everyone in our tourism hospitality sector to know that we support them and that we want to look into this because they bought it to us. But I think it would be a terrible signal to just turn them down in spite of maybe concerns about particular models, which may or may not be what we pursue anyways. So I think as a statement of support, I think that this is the right move. There's lots of due diligence. There are no commitments here. There's simply a request for more information, which will ultimately lead another council to make a decision on what those next steps should be. I think that that's the right move and will support it and encourage council to do so as well. And
I'll return the chair to you, your worship. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is councillor Kyle.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. Through you to C A O Hurdle. I questioned this to the T K delegates last night as well. I'm, I'm interested mainly in transportation because I want this to be a build it and they will come situation. I'm particularly interested in how folks would get here to use this if it goes forward. So recommendation three talks about the options of the feasibility. Will that include a piece about air travel, rail travel, so on and so forth? Because again, just if we do this down the road, hopefully people will be getting here then more than just by the road. So can you talk a bit about the transportation piece and if that's included in feasibility?
Thank you. And through Mr. Mayor. So absolutely councillor Kylie, we would include some of that information in terms of how we would expect people to be able to get to Kingston for conferences. So I know yesterday there were comments, obviously, that were made that there is a lot of travel that happens by road. But we also know that V I A does have group rates. And and I believe some of our flights also, our airlines have group rates. So those are all going to be things we're going to explore. And it's definitely information that we can include as we bring the report back that has more details around, but the model can look like the capacity, et cetera. So we can address those things in more details as well.
That'd be excellent. Yeah, I'll look forward to reading that. Thank you.
Okay, next is councillor Stroud.
Thanks, your worship. I'm gonna start also with a question. It's not clear to me from the report, there's, there's, I, I'm able to guess, but maybe if you just have it stated openly by staff. The, is this connection with the downtown center of excellence in Lawrence College downtown campus thing? Is that like a new piece that did not exist in two thousand and fourteen that give this project more a chance of, of success because of synergies with that concept? Or was that concept around in two thousand and fourteen as well?
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Mayor. So councillor Stroud, as you, you might have been able to get through the report and see that from the two thousand and thirteen study that was done for Conference Center, it was found that at the time there wasn't a market in Kingston for a conference center of medium size. So it wasn't contemplated in two thousand and fourteen. And obviously, the partnership with St. Lawrence College potentially being engaged in the downtown location wasn't contemplated either in two thousand and fourteen. So those two elements are new that weren't there at the time. I do want to point out for council that I anticipate that the potential partnership with St. Lawrence College will change based on, obviously, what has happened over the last two years during the pandemic. Institutions have also been impacted and we're currently working on reviewing what that might look like. So that's additional information that we will need to bring back to council as well.
Okay, okay, thank you. So on the downtown campus concept, when it, when it came up in a different form a couple of years ago, I did hear from my constituents a little bit about that. On the, on the idea of a medium sized conference center, I haven't heard that at all, actually, from any constituents that, that there's demand for it, that, that there's people in my district that think we should be going in that direction. So I'm in a kind of a weird position to have to, you know, support a non binding further exploration of this concept. It just doesn't seem to be coming from the electorate at all. It, it seems like a, a concept that's being pushed by a, a group of interested parties. And there's nothing wrong with that. I just, I have to represent my constituents and I really don't see any, any political purchase for this idea in my, in my district. So I, I know that there were some negative voices on the downtown campus idea. I do represent a downtown district. There, there wasn't enough of them for me to know that that was for sure the majority position of, of my constituents. But I did hear some negative feedback about that idea because it seemed like it was, the city was making a deal with a, an external party that didn't necessarily have the interests of the, of the taxpayer and the constituent in mind. So with all that in mind, I, I really think we, we, we don't want to bind ourselves to any future expenditures. We don't want to burden the taxpayer, as councillor Chappelle has said. With something very murky and unclear, we also don't want to give the perception that we're, we're pushing for something that isn't really what the people are asking for. That's something that, you know, private interests are asking for. So I think, I think it's a, I, I think it's a no go for me. I'm gonna vote against. I know it'll probably pass anyway. And, 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 and we'll see what comes of it. But we really, if we want this kind of thing to, to go anywhere, we're gonna have to drum up some public support for the concept and be able to show evidence of that. Thank you.
I think everybody's spoken, so we will call the vote on clause one. All those in favor? Post? That carries by a vote of six to three. Councillor Chappelle, McLaren and Stroud, post. Okay, moving on to clause two, Kingston Penitentiary, two thousand and twenty two lease and partnership agreements. Any discussion?
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. Through you, I think the comment that was made last night that excited me the most, that came after I spoke, so I didn't get to express my pleasure then, was that there are so many students that are being brought into this. And councillor Neil kind of teased that out with his questioning. And I just want to thank staff for that. And it's neat to think that local talent is being utilized both in our city here at K P, but elsewhere in terms of the, the different internships and jobs that are offered through production companies. So very exciting.
Thank you. Just for you.
Yes, I, I think it's an exciting continuation of a really good project. And, and I want to applaud both our staff and, and the Tourism Kingston people who've been behind this. There was a woman who came yesterday in delegation who I think made some very, very good comments and great suggestions and has a considerable experience and background in this. And I hope that both our staff and Tourism Kingston can reach out and take advantage of that knowledge and background. I, in the mid eighties, I actually taught at correctional corrections. I opened the school at Pittsburgh Institution and then opened the school in Bath Institution. And it really is, it would be great if we could have an opportunity to have people with lived experience engaged in that, whether it be former guards or former inmates. There's some really interesting people that you meet in, in that situation. And I think it would be a great opportunity to engage those people. My teaching job there was was quite engaging because there were all kinds of, of people. There were former CEOs of banks that, that were tutors in my program. And, and so, so it, it really is a cross section of, of people that I'm sure in retirement would be quite willing to be guides or be engaged in that. And I, I hope we take advantage of that. So, thank you.
See you.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Mayor. So councillor Neil, you're absolutely right. And I just want to confirm that there have been some former employees of the Kingston Pen country that have been involved in the past in the, the tours as volunteers. And definitely we've connected today, so Tourism Kingston, the city and St. Lawrence Parks Commission. And we will be reaching out to the delegation that was here last night to make sure that we do incorporate and more voices from the community.
That's great. Thank you very much.
Okay, next is councillor Ossanic.
Thanks, Mayor Patterson. I just want to say that the same reasons that we would support something like this when we talk about the, you know, public and tourism and, and business and filming and generating profitable activities is the same reason why we would support something like the, the conference center. And this is a, a good thing. It brings people to the city. It creates culture and livelihood and a positive impact on our city. So I didn't get calls from my constituents either, but I, on this, but I know that that's what they look for us. As you said, Mayor Patterson, for the leadership to, to bring us to this point and recognize what, what would be good for the city. And I think that's really important. And I commend those who are involved here as well. And hopefully we can support this as well.
Hey, thank you. Next councillor Sinic.
Thank you, your worship. I just wanted to talk about the fun aspect for a second. So like, to me, it's just so much fun watching one of those movies that was filmed right here in Kingston and, and seeing Kingston in the movie. And we just started watching Mayor Kingston. And I have to say, Mayor Patterson, I am so happy you're our mayor for Kingston. And Kingston is not the situation as shown on Mayor Kingston, right? But like, it's just so incredible to see all the shots from K P, you know, like on, on the water. And they have some nighttime shots. And we've actually like frozen the movie to say, hey, you know, like, look at that. That's the, um, where was it? It's, um, the rugby field right in front of Grant Hall and there's K G H. And, and then they did a scene on the Wolf Island Ferry dock. And it's just like so much fun watching the movie as, like, you feel like you're a part of it. And that is just makes you so proud to be living in Kingston. And I just wish like the tourism office, like for film production is fantastic. And I hope all these movies continue to have like a few shots filmed in Kingston because it just brings great pride to be living here and seeing it in the big screen. Thank you.
Awesome. Okay, thank you. Next is councillor Stroud.
Yeah, well, actually, contrary to what councillor Ossonoff was saying about this being sort of similar to the conference center, I, I don't see it that way at all. Beg to differ. I actually do hear positive comments about Kingston Pen tours and the potential on that site for tourism quite regularly from my constituents.
and the potential on that site for tourism quite regularly from my constituents. And I, I think it's a success story already. I think, uh, I, I think the question here isn't really whether we should renew the lease and then the agreement. I think the question is, is the sky, I mean, the sky's the limit here. So I, I think, I think the question is, are we actually underplaying this asset? Uh, I don't think, uh, personally, I mean, this isn't on the table today. But, uh, you know, if we, if we, if we sold the asset completely to a private developer for housing or something like that, it wouldn't have the same effect as developing its true potential for film and for tourism as we're seeing with this agreement. I think, I think this isn't the end of, of where we can go with this. And, uh, and I think there's actually greater potential than, than what's already been tapped. I think it's, it is a full, a fully a success story. And, and I'm actually, I would encourage those involved to, to think bold on this and to, and to go even bigger on, uh, on the potential on this site. So I will be supporting this recommendation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, anybody else on clause two?
Thank you, worship. I mean, when you hear the enthusiasm, Counselor Sennick, speaking about this outstanding tourist traction, it is one of the items that when I have friends and family that come to Kingston, they want to go to Kingston. So, uh, accolades to the comments that, uh, Counselor Stroud has made. I've also heard very, very many feed, a number of feedback, uh, conversations from both staff, um, residents as well as visitors saying that that it was such an important opportunity for them to attend. And, uh, I, I very much support whatever to, with the, the film industry and Tourism Kingston's opportunities to leverage this, this heritage facility that we have in Kingston. So I'd be su- supporting this fully, uh, going forward. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, there's no further discussion. We will call the vote on clause two. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, on to clause three, temporary patio program standards, application process and applicable fees for twenty twenty-two. Okay, Counselor.
Your worship, um, I, I certainly appreciate the opportunity for, for us to have a temporary patio. So there's been a great opportunity to, to engage with, uh, the businesses downtown, help them through the trying times. And I think a lot of people really enjoyed that opportunity last year. My only question and concern is that this is restricted to the BIA location of the downtown core. And we have many restaurants, uh, in, in different districts that would benefit from having patio access. And I'm wondering if, if, um, if Commissioner Joyce can explain why some of these smaller businesses in the East End and West End have not been considered for this patio expansion program.
Thank you. Through you worship, I think that, uh, this was coming about as, uh, from some very specific, uh, concerns that were raised in, uh, the DBI area and how to support because, uh, there was indication that from an economic perspective, uh, they were having some, uh, difficulties down in, down in that area. I don't think that necessarily, uh, precludes looking beyond, uh, that border and future. And that's something that we, we can certainly, uh, uh, take a look at. And I'll, Director Sample may have more information on this.
Am I able to speak, your worship? Uh, just, just to comment on, uh, Commissioner Joyce's call. Is it possible to have within this report consideration for other parts of the city as well? Uh, and then you won't have to bother reconsidering and it'd be optional for the same process, uh, to go through a patio agreement that they can also participate?
Um, yes, uh, through, through you, Mr. Mayor. So this, um, this process is not, uh, specific only, only to the BIA. It would apply to other areas of the city as well. So most of the, I guess most of the demand is with, is within the downtown, but it does apply to other public areas in the city.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Mayor. So I just wanted to add that in the, um, the last couple of years, we have, uh, allowed restaurants to expand or create patios in parking lots. Um, and I can think of a number in the West End, for example, uh, where they have been able to do that. Uh, so we have been working, uh, quite closely with businesses in other areas where, uh, they've reached out to us to try to create additional or new patio space that didn't exist before.
So just to clarify, in supporting this report coming to council tonight, I'm not limiting, um, businesses in the West End or the East End of the city outside of the BIA to participate in a program with a patio, should they choose to pursue it.
So I think the answer for Mr. Simple was that it applies across the city.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, that is true. It applies across the city. And further to CA, CAO hurdle, there is also programs in place that allow, um, patios on private property too, across the city.
Okay. Next is Counselor Stroud.
Thank you, worship. Yeah, I think it's important. And I, and I know I've mentioned this kind of thing before, but I just think it's important to draw council's attention to some very, uh, high level facts about this program. So, um, so, you know, the difference between having public space to be used for parking a vehicle as opposed to for, say, a patio, uh, as this, uh, program, this temporary patio program is suggesting, and that has been tried successfully. I think it's no surprise that it was successful and that, and that it was, uh, supported, as we've heard in the report and from staff. It's be, it comes to do with just use of space. Uh, uh, a, a vehicle is a large, is a large contraption, right? It, it, it says in here that it has the dimensions in the report of the size, uh, that's being repurposed. In, in the space that you can park one vehicle, you can have two, uh, or three patio tables, right? Uh, so that's, that's maybe a dozen, a dozen customers for a downtown business. And that, and they will turn over actually faster than the typical vehicle will turn over in a parking space. So you're, you're talking about a ratio of maybe up to twenty to one, twenty people using the, using a space in a certain amount of time ver- versus one, uh, using a vehicle, because often there's only one person in the vehicle. Um, I, I really think that that, that concept of how space is used, especially public space, really underlines why, uh, car storage is such a poor use of space when there's, uh, when it's in competition with other uses. If it's not in competition, then you need parking like at a, at a mall in a suburban area. You know, you could argue that, that, that it's a good use of space because you definitely need parking. But in a downtown area where, uh, it competes with patios, it competes with many, you know, activities that businesses might want. They might want their displays, uh, uh, you know, out in that space as well. It really doesn't compare favorably. And, and that's why I think not only should we be looking at this temporary thing, which started out as a pandemic response, we should be looking at repurposing a lot of our public space, uh, that is underutilized right now as car storage i- into this kind of thing. Not just, not just for a temporary measure, but, uh, you know, in the long run, because it will serve more constituents, it'll serve more people, and it will bring a thriving, uh, nature to the city uh, that is great for tourism and everything else. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next is Counselor.
Oh, I just want to say I agree with, uh, Counselor Stroud's comments. I also want to thank Counselor Chappelle. Uh, it saves me reminding, as I do constantly, our CAO, that good ideas don't end at, at Division Street. And, uh, and what happens is, uh, the BIA area has the benefit of, for a long time, having an organized, uh, group to lobby uh, for, uh, their good ideas. And too often, it, it, in the past, it's just been accomplished within the boundaries of the BIA. And, and there are many restaurants, uh, as you go up through, uh, Williamsville that could benefit from that. Some of the parking, uh, uh, benefits that we discovered through COVID can also be applied to other areas as well. And I'm thinking of Portsmouth and, and I'm sure Counselor Chappelle knows of many in, in the West End, uh, that we should have under consideration as well. So I appreciate this initiative. And I'm glad to hear that it's encompassing all of, all of Kingston, uh, where, uh, the request for a patio can be made. So, thank you very much.
Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Okay, we will call the vote on clause three. All those in favor? Opposed? Be on to clause four, proposed amendments to nuisance party by law.
Thank you, worship. I actually, uh, um, wanted to put my hand up first because I want to propose a deferral, uh, to this motion. I've asked, uh, uh, the clerk to prepare one and, uh, Mayor Patterson is going to second it. So I wonder if you could put it up on the screen for us.
Okay, so, uh, the motion to defer, uh, move on until he'll second it by myself. The clause four, report twenty-six received from the CAO, uh, proposed amendments to the nuisance party by law be deferred to the council meeting scheduled for June twenty-first, twenty twenty-two to allow staff to undertake public consultation with landlords and landlord associations. Okay, so, uh, motion to defer is debatable with respect to time, place and purpose. And, um, you have up to one minute to speak. Counselor.
Well, so the purpose of this is basically to, to try to alleviate some of the misconceptions that I think I've heard both in writing and, uh, in, in discussing this with people. I, I think they're, they're making some assumptions here that aren't really accurate. Uh, and I think what that requires is, is an opportunity for staff to be able to go back, have some discussions with landlord associations, different landlord groups, uh, try to bring those folks, uh, on board with what, what we're doing here. Because I don't think the impact, uh, on the landlords is exactly how they sort of, uh, um, come to believe it is based on their reading of it. So I think that just re- re- requires some additional consultation. I would also suggest that maybe one of the things staff could do is to create a, a resource document that landlords could use to, to give out to their tenants so that they understand exactly what this, uh, uh, bylaw is intended to do. So it's really just about giving more time for consultation and an opportunity for, if staff decides to develop a resource document that, uh, um, could go with this.
Next is Counselor Stroud.
Yes, uh, I actually think there's something missing from the rationale or for the purpose. We have a backup on the screen. Uh, I, I, I do want to support the deferral, but there's another, uh, strong reason. And that would be because, uh, you all know that Queens University announced yesterday a parallel process, uh, a task force to look at large gatherings. So, uh, I'm wondering if I could amend the, uh, motion to defer to include the language to that effect. So that, so that it would, the deferral, and then I guess I need to ask a question to staff whether, whether we have any timelines on that.
So first of all, so I'll jump in his chair. So, so procedural bylaw does not, uh, does not permit an amendment to a motion to defer. So if, uh, if you wanted to propose a different motion to defer the different rationale, you actually have to vote this one down and then put forward a new one. But perhaps, and this is just guidance from, from myself as chair, Counselor Stroud, I think if, if the, if the motion defer is going to pass anyways, then I think just to, your verbal comments, basically supporting that, I think would be, uh, was certainly at that. I'm just, again, that's just the procedural bylaw that we.
Okay, yeah, well, there's another way to get at it. It's just ask staff, do we know whether June twenty-first, we will have heard, uh, the, the, the full, uh, nature of this, uh, process by Queens University?
It, it might be a difficult question since it's not a, a city task force, but I'm not sure if staff have any comments. CEO hurdle.
Um, thank you. And, uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. So I, I don't know the, the exact timing of the details in terms of the task force. I know it was announced, obviously, yesterday. Um, I, I am aware that they've reached out to the city to have representation that they're looking at some pretty tight deadlines, um, as far as bringing back, uh, some recommended actions uh, with the task force. But because a city is not leading the task force, I can't comment on the details of, of the planning aspect of it. Uh, I think that's information that we would be able to bring back at a later time when we do, uh, have the chance to connect with Queens. As far as the timeframe for this, uh, motion, the deferral and the ability to consult with the landlords, I think, uh, that timeframe is appropriate. It's something that, um, I know, uh, the, um, bylaw team as well as the legal team have been, uh, consulted on earlier today.
Okay, and I suppose, uh, Miss, uh, Mr. Mayor, if it comes back June twenty-first and, and we still need more time, we have the option to defer again. Is that correct?
Motion to defer is almost always in order.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Uh, next on the motion to defer is Counselor.
Um, thank you, Mayor Patterson. I just, um, appreciate Counselor Hill's, uh, words there. And I would be, um, pleased to support this. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor.
Thank you, your worship. Uh, my question is regarding place. I, I would have thought that this could be deferred to the, uh, policy admin meeting. We have one coming up next month, which could be scheduled nicely, which would allow public consultation, um, and, and have deliberations from the public with regards to this. Uh, and I would have thought that would be a more appropriate place. And then perhaps from there, come back to council for further debate. Um, and so I, I'm not completely sure if I understand the purpose or intent of this motion. But, um, let's listen to what my other colleagues have to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak to the motion to defer?
Thank you, your worship. I don't know if this is allowed. Can we ask a question to staff? As part of that?
As long as, yeah, as long as the question is with respect to time, place or purpose, then yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. So through you, a question to staff. Does that, does Counselor Stippel's suggestion to make it go to administrative policies committee, does that make it easier for staff then to do the consultation? Because everybody would be in one room and it could be one question at a time. And, you know, in a formal setting, uh, does that make it easier?
Okay, so, just give me one sec, uh, Counselor. Okay, sorry. So I'm just trying to think of the best way to, to explain. So as I said to Counselor Stroud, um, a motion defer cannot be amended. So if, uh, if you want it to be deferred to the administrative policies committee instead, then you have to vote against this motion defer and put another motion to defer for it. However,
Okay.
Counselor Sennick, I think your question, so that's the, that's the, the issue. I'm not sure if, if staff have anything they, they want to say. And I guess your question is, which is, which is a better route? Or does staff have any comment on, you know, what consultation could look like? So maybe we could throw that out. Uh, staff have any comments on, or any thoughts on what consultation might look like? CEO hurdle and, uh, and Ms. Campo or CEO hurdle, whoever would like to say it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll, I'll get started. And, uh, Manager Campo may want to add. I, I know he's done some consultation on, on this, uh, bylaw before. So we would definitely want to reach out to the landlords association, I think, have some, um, you know, focused discussions with those organizations as a starting point, because they're the ones that are raising, obviously, some of those concerns. So I, I do think that that would be a focus of the engagement and consultation.
So I I do think that that would be a focus of the engagement and consultation. I'm not sure if Manager Campo wanted to add anything to that.
Thank you, CEO hurdle and through your worship. Absolutely, to to CEO hurdles' point, we would be consulting the rental property associations. We do. Although we we can do that public consultation, we do extensive consultation with the surrounding university district already right now. Throughout the past number of years, we partner up with the student association with Queens University. We do pamphlet education flyers, which is sort of, to my understanding, the desire of what council is sort of looking for, some kind of information that can be delivered to the property owners to some extent. I I believe that is happening currently. It's slated to happen in the next week or so with Queens University, where we're going door to door with Kingston Police and bylaw officers to give out information about the nuisance party before these these major events happen. So we do this before Saint Patrick's Day. We do this before homecoming and orientation. So there is some engagement that I I believe already definitely happens on an ongoing basis. And just further to the question that was posed earlier with the task force, the myself, I I'm in those engagement meetings with Queens University on a biweekly basis. And the intent is to have something prepared for the student move in for twenty twenty two coming up. Thank you.
Okay, so Counselor Stacks are back to you.
I'm I'm happy to support the deferral. Thank you.
What else on the deferral? Time, place or purpose? Counselor there?
Thank you. With regards to time and place, do we actually need a formal declaration to bring into administrative policies? Or if staff feels that it's necessary or beneficial, can they just do it?
See you here.
Thank you and through you, Mr. Mayor. So currently, the the deferral would mean that we would bring it back to council because this is where the the original report is being brought forward. So the reporting back would be to council unless directed differently by council.
I guess in that question, I meant part of your consultation to have a public meeting. Would it be possible to admin policies? With this deferral as it's worded now?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, we we could always bring information for consultation purpose only at administrative policies committee. And that's something that we could definitely do as a step before we bring the report back to council with the final recommendations.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else on the motion to defer? We'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? And that carries by a vote of six to one, Counselor Chappelle opposed. Okay, on to clause five, transfer of administration of transportation network companies by law to Kingston area taxi commission. And discussion? Okay, we will call the vote, although, oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Kylie, go ahead.
Sorry, Mayor Patterson. I am relatively new to this file, looked at the staff report, just wanted to have a point of clarity through you, of course. What other municipalities in the province have control over their own taxi commission?
That's a great question. Mr. McLeod.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Kingston is the is quite unique in the structure that we have. We have a separate taxi commission. In the vast majority of all others, it is managed through municipal bylaw with municipal staff. The taxi commission has been in place in this way since nineteen eighty nine.
And do you have any history on that, Mr. McLeod? Why we are unique in that way?
I have a very large amount of history on this, counselor. It's it was passed by a statute in the late nineteen eighties as a request for the industry that at the time was agreed to by council. And it is it is governed by a statute of the legislature that is separate from the municipal act. And in that regard, we are singular.
Interesting. All right, so my final question is broad. Forgive me again, just reading through the the report. Could you give us a a quick oral summary of why you're supporting this transfer?
The transfer, the request is to have a discussion so that we have had since the date of the report, one introductory discussion with C O Silver of Loyola Township and Diane Aziz of the Taxi Commission. And we are exploring the opportunity to basically not set up a separate bureaucracy to do a parallel process, which is already occurring with the Taxi Commission, while as they regulate the taxi. But at the same time, providing which municipal resources in each of the two municipalities are appropriate to support. So it's the discussion is expected to lead, for example, to prosecutions under our bylaw that was passed in December to stay with the city so the municipal prosecutor would manage that part of the process.
All right, thank you. I'll leave it there for now.
And I, this is sort of anecdotal and I I apologize if I I'm not intending to offend anybody. But every now and then we see a pretty public sort of difference of opinion, I guess, at the Taxi Commission. And and so I'm I'm wondering, is this, you know, is this going to facilitate kind of bringing that to an end? Or like, we're not talking here about making that Taxi Commission sort of more independent from from the community, from the municipalities, are we?
Through you, your worship. Nothing about the administration or the autonomy of the Taxi Commission will change. What's being requested is a negotiation and review of the opportunities to have them manage just the licensing of the rideshare vehicles and the role and the companies as well as the enforcement. Not the enforcement through the prosecution, but just the frontline enforcement. These are the matters that they already administer and they already have a system. We will have to harmonize the system because even the municipality of Loyola Township and the city of Kingston have different processes. So it'll be a three-way discussion to make sure the system works. And then each of the municipalities would have a separate agreement with the Taxi Commission. But in terms of their internal administration and autonomy, it's expected that will just stay the same as it is.
And just a follow up. So do we feel like, I know with all the sort of ride sharing programs, and I think a lot of those issues are are coming to some resolution in different municipalities. But do we think we're at the point where where that's a good idea? Where where they can resolve those differences amicably, I guess?
Yes, and I think I'll give you one example. So since the date of this report, I've also had discussions with representatives of the taxi industry. One of the other things they're assured by is that on an evening and in downtown in a busy area of Kingston, it would be the same enforcement officers dealing with the taxis as well as the rideshires. So there'd be a sense of proportionality and a level playing field on the street. That's one of the things the taxi industry has asked for us for a number of years is to help them manage the challenge of the new technology in a way that maintains not a preference, but all just tries to level the playing field in a regular framework.
Thank you.
Okay, next is Counselor Neil.
I completely support this. The biggest gripe, and it happened in the nineties, even prior to Uber, but now that we have ride sharing happening. There the taxi industry has said we need a level playing field. We need to make sure that drivers have have safety, have CPICs, so they've been. It's been determined that they don't have a criminal record. And therefore, putting it all under one umbrella group, I think is really, really helpful. Now that what happens is that up until now, Uber and other ride sharing places have sent drivers in from, and we have no idea what their background is or what kind of safety checks are on their automobiles. And they come from Toronto, Montreal, Ottawa at homecoming and other times. And I think it's really, really important that you have the same sense of security whether you call Uber or you call Amy's Taxi. And and for that reason, I think this is harmonizing the rules and regulations around those, making sure they're properly insured. All of those things can be done by the Taxi Commission because they're already doing those things. And so for that reason, I'll be supporting the motion.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other discussion? Okay, we will call the vote then on clause five. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's great. Okay, clause six, Federation of Canadian Municipalities Debencher Issues. That's Kylie.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. And through you, if you would give me ten seconds. Sorry, I'm just pulling up my notes on this one. If the CFO is here, Ms. Kennedy, I'm wondering about the proportion of the debt that is shared by the city versus the federation. Do you speak to that while I get my numbers straight?
Certainly, thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for the question, Counselor Kylie. So, yes, so the the total program, the Kingston, actually, it's now, I think it's called Green Energy or something program. Now we changed it. But when council approved it, it was for about just over eighteen million dollar program. It was a twenty percent municipal, eighty percent funded by FCM. And there was a split between a grant funding and a loan funding with FCM. Council approved this and the funding as part of the capital budget. And at the time, we treated the eighty percent from FCM as grant funding. And that's that's how it was approved. Once we started in reviewing the agreements and getting some of the paperwork from FCM, they actually are requiring us to issue debentures on the loan piece of which is about ten million dollars that FCM is contributing towards the loans that would then be distributed out to the homeowners. And so because they're requiring municipal debentures, that changes the whole approval process. Under the municipal act, we now are required to get approval from council in terms of actually issuing those debentures to FCM and then showing that against our debt limits. And so that's what the recommendation is doing tonight for that ten million piece that's the loan piece coming from FCM. Important to note for council, two things. One, so the way that will work is the funds will flow, the ten million dollars will flow from FCM to the city. And then the city will flow to eligible homeowners. That will become like a local improvement on the homeowner's tax bill and they will repay it over anywhere up to a twenty year term. So as they repay those funds, they'll come back to the city and will flow those funds back to FCM. FCM has just recently confirmed that they will, this will all be done at a zero interest rate. So FCM is not charging us any interest on that ten million dollars.
Thank you supplemental, just to be sure that I understand. And that is helpful what you've just said. But essentially, we're lending the money to FCM that they're lending to our homeowners that comes back to us at no cost. Sorry, I'm just trying to make sure that Chris will clear, get this.
Yep, so the flow is FCM will loan the money to the city. So we will issue them a debenture. They will give us the ten million dollars or up to ten million dollars. We will then use those funds to loan to the homeowners to cover the eligible costs under the program. Then after that's done, there'll be agreements with the homeowners as well. They will repay those funds back to the city on their tax bill each year up to up to twenty year period. As those funds come back to us, we'll forward those repayment of funds back to FCM.
Okay, excellent and great to hear that at zero percent interest. Very good.
Okay. We'll call the vote on clause six. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's great. Clause seven, provincial and accountability fund intake three and streamlined development approval fund transfer payment agreements and related procurement. Any discussion?
I I've had some correspondence with your worship. I've had some opportunity to have some correspondence with Ms. Kennedy on this particular issue. My, I realized that the province has announced these funding envelopes quite recently, like forty eight million dollars. And it's it's a means to help facilitate improvements within the operating structure and the planning process for the municipality. My concern that I raised, and I'm hoping that Ms. Kennedy can respond to this, is the notion of a sole source contract. When what is only deemed to be required is to sign back the agreement with the province. And because the deadline for some of this work is well over a year away, I'm I'm asking for us to go to an RFQ process and have other opportunities from other accounting firms or leading businesses that do this type of work to come forward with a proposal. The reason I say this is we already know what the cash flow value is. So it's a better way to get increased value for our tax dollars, even though our taxpayers are paying, the province paying for still tax dollars from us out of the province. Because we know the envelope, how much is there? If we open it to the public rather than sole sourcing KPMG, we'll have an opportunity to get more value, more hours, more experience, better proposals. And that's what I'm asking for. So I'll ask Ms. Kennedy if she has anything to offer. But I'm really concerned of the sole source approach for this.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. And and thank you, Counselor Chappelle, for that for that question, the opportunity to provide a little more context. And actually, just in terms of of the report itself, we actually were reviewing whether this should be a sole source or not prior to to doing this report. And we were going to bring something back to council in March. But just found out actually about two days before the agenda came out that we had to have the bylaw for both of these funding opportunities in order to sign the agreements before March first. And so we felt just we had to to rush to pull that together and and to put this piece in. And so appreciate the opportunity to maybe provide a little more context and discussion we've had since the the agenda went out a week ago around around this sole source opportunity. So just a couple of things that that the working group that's managing this project has looked at. I believe the council report does reference some of the timelines in this. So it is about a year. We have to have a the review completed, the recommendations and the report back, a report back to the minute, a separate report back to the ministry and everything to be available publicly by February first of twenty twenty three. So we have roughly a a year to do that. It takes about six weeks, maybe two months in terms of doing an RFP. By the time we pull it together, we like to have it posted for a minimum of of three weeks for something like this, probably closer to a month. And so it it takes about two months out of that time period. It does still sound like a lot of time. You know, I still have ten months left on the calculator for that. But we just came through something very similar. And council will recall our phase two audit and accountability fund monies. And we did a scheduling time and attendance review of the processes for that. And that actually did go to RFP. We had, I believe, seven proponents with that RFP. KPMG did win that one and came in. It was not actually our auditing office here in Kingston that did it. It was another group from KPMG that did that work. And I can tell you from our experience on that, while you think ten months is a lot of time. And I believe that when we had a little less, I think it was about eight months that we had on on phase two. It takes a lot of work to carry out these these processes, these reviews of these processes. It's across the whole corporation. When you're talking about cash receipts, it's a number of departments as well as processes within our agencies and utilities Kingston because we collect on them as well. So it does take a lot of time. It takes a lot of time to pull together the report to vent that through the appropriate staff and the senior management and then to do the reporting back. So and I can tell you frankly, for the time and attendance, I wish we had had about another two months to do that. We actually left some money on the table because we ran out of time and I'd like to have expanded the scope on that project. So from a time standpoint, we felt that we another, taking another two months out of that process would be detrimental in terms of of trying to have the appropriate time. Another couple of things that we did look at, and you're correct, Counselor. Another couple of things that we did look at, and you're correct, Counselor, it's a fixed fee. We know it's $150,000 and that's public information. And so the consultants know that as well. So when we were looking at that, and we actually did go back and look at the time and attendance RFP process and some of the evaluations on that. And what we found is when you take the fee out, then you're really looking at things like the experience of the company, the experience of the team that's going to be on there, the methodology, the scheduling, the resourcing, the capability they have to resource a project as large as this. And so there are others, I would say, other more national firms like KPMG. And we did have another one for the time and attendance that was very close in terms of scoring, because they are a national firm. They have lots of resources. They have lots of experience. And but what it came down to is because it's a financial process, KPMG is all, is already well aware of what our processes are. They know our processes. They know our systems because they audit them. They know our people. They can hit the ground running. And so what we found, when you looked at value for the dollars, value for that 150,000 of fixed fee, we were getting an increased value from KPMG because they already had some of that orientation type steps already done, some of the initiatives that they would do towards that. And so what we found from a value for dollar for dollar, we were actually ahead of the game with KPMG. The third last thing I'll say, and sorry, it's a little bit of a long answer, but we have done a lot of work on this. The third thing that I will say is there's been, as council knows, a lot of money out there. This is the third phase of the Audit and Accountability Fund, which is eligible for 39 of the larger municipalities. There is also a, another fund that, that does something similar in terms of looking at process efficiencies for the smaller and rural municipalities as well. And they've also had a couple of, of phases of funding. And so in terms of the consultants that are out there that can do this work, they're already at capacity. They have a lot of work to cover off these projects that are covered by, by these two types of funding. And my discussions early on with KPMG, our auditors here in Kingston, they actually said that they are being very specific in terms of the work that they're taking on. They do not have the capacity to, to do all of the demand that's coming from these, these grant fundings. And so certainly they had us, we're one of the largest municipal, we are the largest municipal client for the Kingston office. They've done a lot of this work for us already. And so they were also interested in, in whether or not we were going to be needing them to do something because otherwise they would put that capacity elsewhere. So there was a concern if we took two months and we did go to proposal that we might have a challenge in terms of, of getting other firms to propose. So just a little bit of context, hopefully around sort of, of some of the rationale and why we decided at the end of the day that to, to do a sole source for this, this piece of work.
Those are supplemental to that, Ms. Kennedy. There are two different funding streams. There's one that you're talking about for the financial auditing. And I, and from what you've described, I, I will yield and I'll say that the rationale you provided, it satisfies my concerns from a taxpayer perspective for KPMG. But there's still the streamlined development approval. And I think that process should actually go to tender because it's a little different and it's a different project. And there are definitely capacity within the industry. I know of several consultants that do this type of work. And I would encourage us to open that up to a larger scale to maybe get, gain experience with other players in the field. So that, you know, should one time come, we need to look at other consultants for doing work that is paid for by the province. It'll be great. So I'm hoping that we could split this motion to have two separate authorizations from council to pursue these agreements. And that one be directed for the sole source as you've described. But the second one, be have come back to council with describing who we would choose.
You expected?
Thank you. And through your worship, just a point and clarification. So what is before you tonight related to the provincial funds associated with the facilitation of development approvals and efficiencies? That's the bylaw just for council to be able to enter into the funding. For council's benefit, we will be bringing a report on March 1st that will identify all of the staff recommendations with respect to how those funds get spent. We've been actively working on that for about a week and a half now since we received notification that the money would be coming to the municipality. We just have, didn't have time to get all of that together for this evening. But the, the agreement itself had to be signed before the next council meeting. So that's why you see the bylaw coming tonight. But we will actually be bringing you a report that will itemize all of the recommendations with respect to how those provincial funds get spent. And it will include a variety of different initiatives. It wouldn't just be one contract. It, it could involve additional staff. It could be some consultant work on a variety of different pieces that affect different departments. And we're actually working with the Conservation Authority and Utilities Kingston as well. So you'll see all of those recommendations in the March 1st report.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Agnew.
Okay, so that answer from Staff Counselor Spoh, you're, you're good to proceed. Okay. If there's no other discussion, then we will call a vote on clause seven. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, moving on to report number 27 from Planning Committee. Sorry, Counselor Neil.
Sorry, I did declare a conflict on this 26 hours ago, I think. And I would therefore be turning off my camera. The, I declared a conflict twice already at planning. So this is my third time, same conflict. My daughter owns a property one very short block away, so.
You declared the conflict, actually, the beginning of this meeting, it just happened to be yesterday, so.
Yeah, exactly. So, thank you.
So, okay.
Moved by Counselor Kylie, seconded by Counselor O'Sanick. That report number 27 from the Planning Committee be received and adopted.
Okay, so there's just the one clause, approval of application for zoning bylaw amendment, 178 Rita Street, 3 Ragland Road and 5 Ragland Road. You will call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, we have nothing from Committee of the Whole Information Reports. If you have any questions, just raise your hand as I read through them. Number one, tender and contract awards subject to the established criteria for delegation of authority for the month of December 2021. According to the report Tourism Kingston Q4 2021. Intensification, redevelopment and climate change. Counselor Sack?
Thank you, your worship. This is an information report, so we can only ask questions. But I do have some questions for staff. So through you, my first question is, so when we, okay, so the report says that staff intend to undertake a review of the tree bylaw to identify opportunities for greater tree retention at that time, right? After we do the official plan update. And I think the last time we did the official plan update, it was about three or four years long. And so my question to staff is, I know that the official plan update is going to start in 2023. What year do we think that we're going to be able to get to a review of the tree bylaw?
Thank you. And through you, so our last update took two years. We're anticipating about a two-year timeframe for this official plan review. It will be quite comprehensive in nature, and we do want to have a robust public consultation program associated with that work. So that is scheduled to, to commence in 2023. But to your point, Counselor O'Sanick, I think the key thing that we want to do is to ensure that all of the work that's going to go into the official plan review and, and really having a much greater lens on climate change, that we are able to take that information and make sure it aligns really well with the tree bylaw. Because the tree bylaw is one of the implementing elements the municipality has relative to the official plan. That said, we can do the work simultaneously or concurrently at the same time. So we don't have to wait for the official plan to be finished before we start the tree bylaw review. We just want to make sure that those two documents are very well aligned and that one really becomes a key implementing tool for the city's visionary document in the official plan.
Okay, thank you. This is a question also to staff. When is council going to see like the newly calculated tree, tree coverage, the canopy coverage for the urban area? Because I thought that was happening in Q1, which would be like by March 31st.
Mr. Joyce?
Thank you. And through you, your worship. So the intention is, we, we actually have just received the report from the consultant. And that, we were hoping to get back in December and then January. So we finally received that. So the intention is to bring that to EITP at the next earliest meeting.
Thank you. So I guess that would be the April EITP. Okay, thank you. My next question is, in the report, it gives the calculation, looking at all the development applications between 2019 and 2021, how many trees were removed, how many trees were replanted? So of the 2,247 trees that were, had been calculated that were removed during that two-year period, what size were those trees? Like, are, were those, was that number based on the tree inventory? And it's my understanding, but this where like, correct me if I'm wrong, that the tree inventories that the developments always produce for planning department, they only look at the trees that are 15 centimeters DBH. So those 2,247 trees, am I correct that they would be all trees that were over 15 centimeters DBH? Is that right?
Yes, thank you through you. Yes, Counselor O'Sanick, that would be correct because that caliber specification comes directly from our tree bylaw. And those are the trees that are subject to the tree bylaw, trees that are smaller than that. The way our tree bylaws written are not currently subject to it.
I see. Okay, so therefore in, through your worship, so that would mean that there is a lot more than 2,247 trees that were removed in that two-year period? Because 15 centimeters DBH is like pretty big. And so all the trees that are, you know, 12 centimeters, 10 centimeters are not included in that calculation. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah. My other question, thank you, is regarding when we then say, okay, 2,000 trees were replanted at all our site plans. Can you please tell us like, what is the inspection of the site plans? Like five years out from a development, for example? Like, is it just complaint basis? You know, if somebody planted a tree, and then I know, I believe that someone from Planning Committee goes in, or maybe someone from Forestry does a site inspection before the securities are given back? Or at some point, the permit to, to come in and go, okay, yeah, the landscape plan said you were supposed to have planted 15 trees. There's 15 trees, but if one of those trees dies four years later, what is the inspection of the site plans at that time? To make sure that any trees at the site plans that were supposed to plant actually do reach maturity?
Thank you. And through you, so I will start on process. I don't know if Ms. Santucci or Mr. Joyce would have anything in addition as the Forestry Department is within that portfolio. But within, within the planning framework, and you're correct, we do take securities at the time of development permits being issued. And we hold those securities until such time that the work has been completed, as outlined in the agreement. That includes all of the planting or revegetation plans. So typically what happens is, once we have official requests for drawdowns on the security, that's an indication that the work has been complete. It has to be signed off by whichever professional landscaper or horticulturist has been retained by the property owner. Staff goes out, so there's planning staff that goes out, and then also staff from Forestry that would go out to inspect whatever's been planted on the property to look at the condition. Certainly, if there's anything that has died within the period of time where we're, we're holding securities or part of that active checking, that goes back to the applicant and they, they do have to replace it. But your question is more so, you know, beyond when the securities have been released because the work is complete, what happens? You're correct, it's more on a complaint basis. If there's something that happens with respect to the property, certainly staff would go out and investigate on private property. If, if it's something that, that has been done with respect to subdivisions or major developments, or certainly if it's part of the municipal inventory of trees, then Public Works has a program associated with that as well. Ms. Santucci, I don't know if you want to add any additional detail?
Yeah, so if it is on public land, we do have that as part of our, our, our tree inventory. If any of those trees are taken back down, we always replace those with another tree. But that is strictly for the public land. We don't look at the private land as part of that tree inventory.
Great. Yeah, thank you. So my question was exactly private developments. I've been on Planning Committee 16 years, so I've seen a lot of woodlands being taken down for development. And during that time, I've seen trees that were once planted that have then died. As I'm driving around the city, I remember those sites. And so it is then anyone can send a complaint in to the Planning Department. Is that if then Ms. Agnew, who, and then Planning Department would say? Because I remember George Wallace, when he was the Director of Planning Committee, he would always tell us that on the site plan, right, they had to plant like these 15 trees. And that becomes a record of their site condition, I think. And we would ask for how many years? And he would say forever, for as long as it's, you know, whatever company or whatever retail store it is, for as long as it is that site, those trees have to stay there. So I think, you know, if one of those trees dies 10 years later, it should be replaced by the owner of that property, correct?
I guess, Counselor, that is correct. Anything that goes through the development process that's subject to either a site plan agreement or a subdivision agreement, those are legally binding contracts with the municipality that are registered against the title of the property. So they stipulate what the conditions are that are acceptable relative to development, including all of the landscaping and planting. So if there are trees that die, if that becomes a, a matter of public record or through a complaint process, the city has the ability to go back and require the property owner to ensure that all of the vegetation is as per the legal agreements that were established through the site plan process or the plan of subdivision process.
Okay, thank you. Through you, your worship, I just have two more questions. One of them is when we do the official plan review, because I know there's a lot of words in this report about 40% infill, this sort of thing. The, the official plan review was just done in Ottawa. And I'm not sure if staff are aware that they put in their official plan that they're aiming for 40% tree coverage in Ottawa. And I just wondered if staff could just follow through their Ottawa's official plan to see if that actually got, gets approved by the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing. That's where their official plan is right now. And we might not be on council, you know, like next in 2023. But I think that would be something good for staff to follow or just to, just to see what happens with Ottawa as best possible.
Certainly, Counselor, we have been actively following the official plan review for the City of Ottawa for many reasons. So that's certainly something that we're continuing and, and will look at. You know, should we want to, and in, I believe that we should look at having targets in our official plan that align with our Strategic Forest Management Plan. We can embed those targets in the official plan and we can change them. So again, there's a lot of really important conversations and work to happen as we look at balancing our goals of, of not wanting to expand unreasonably as a city or unsustainably, but also looking at how we encourage great development that does a, a good job of retaining trees or doing a planting or replanting programs or expanding programs so that we, we have all of those things in check. But I, I think there's an important conversation to come, and we can certainly follow up on that. So thank you for that.
Okay, thank you. And then just my last question is, I think we heard from some of the delegations last night. I've definitely had it, it's like through email, that the word biodiversity is only mentioned once in, in this tree report. All the focus in terms of climate change is just on what looks to be like carbon sinks and not talking about biodiversity. Because without everything to do with our ecosystem, we won't be, you know, humankind won't be here much longer. It's all, it's all a factor of climate change, especially because there's reports that 40% of species have already gone extinct. You know, it's just awful stuff out there. So in terms of biodiversity, I know that the City of Kingston does not have a biodiversity plan. Do we have a biodiversity policy?
Thank you. And through you, so from the planning perspective, we definitely have a section in the current official plan that is, is more termed energy and the environment. So it speaks to biodiversity and a number of elements of environmental concern. biodiversity and a number of elements of environmental concern, PSW, significant forests, there's, there's a lot of language in there. But certainly, if we're, if we want to look at developing more specific type targets or policies related to biodiversity, it's certainly possible for this to explore that through a greater degree in the official plan. Commissioner Joyce, I'm not sure if there's something within Public Works, I'm sorry if I'm not familiar with it, of us having an official biodiversity policy.
Joyce?
Thank you, and through you, Mayor Patterson. Yeah, biodiversity, I think, is named in some, some of the works that, that are happening, and certainly in Public Works, it's a consideration. Certainly, within the Forestry Group, it's a large consideration as we consider what, what species are appropriate for this region, both from a, a natural perspective in terms of native species, and what species can adapt because of the climate impact that we're, that we're seeing in this region. So it, it certainly is a consideration. And I think as part of the, certainly as part of the forestry management program, that will be included in that, in that, in that realm. And then, and there, I do, I'm aware that in past years, there's been some attempts to improve biodiversity with some of the parks, allowing them to go to natural grasses and those kind of things. And, and I'm not sure how far that got. I don't think very far. I think there was, there was some resistance from neighborhoods to some of that. But as we look further down the line, particularly with the forestry management program, it's an aspect that needs to be taken into consideration in this. And even when we look at the urban environment, and what is appropriate, and what, what can we do within the urban environment, that has to be part of that conversation.
All right. Thank you very much, your worship.
Thank you. Next is Counselor Neil.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Counselor Sinick. Great questions. Those of us on planning have heard me make this mini rant before.
Questions, right? No, no rant, please. Information reports?
One of the frustrations is that planner proponents make the, their renderings great. And I'm just curious, often, that isn't what ends up the appearance on the ground, on the street. And so I'm just wondering, from Ms. Agnew, how do we follow up or ensure that those agreed-to plans, in fact, are completed?
Mr. Agnew?
Thank you, and through you. And I think, Counselor Neil, what you're referring to is what oftentimes gets shown at the zoning stage or official plan amendment stage, which is a conceptual design of a future development that has been rendered with, you know, proposed vegetation. But it may not be, in fact, be a representation of what actually gets built, because that is more established through the site plan process, which unless there's a bump-up motion, doesn't make it to, to Planning Committee itself. I would say that, you know, staff really endeavor to ensure that, you know, we're not looking for a like-for-like comparison necessarily, what comes through in site plan. It has to meet with the parameters of whatever the zoning permissions that have been set for the site in terms of the building envelope. And we're, we're getting into things like building articulation materials, when we're looking at site plan, the detailed design. And that's where we get a lot more detail with respect to the actual landscaping plans. But however, you know, sometimes, I understand what you're saying, that the renderings that come forward as part of the conceptual stage, they, they do look very attractive, and they're meant to, as, as associated with trying to build a vision or a concept of what's there. However, we do work hard to try to make sure that the site plans are as good as possible and detailed as possible on the landscaping side. And we certainly work on that with, with our partners in parks and Public Works. But sometimes there is a difference, and I will acknowledge that for sure.
And my further question is, I know that we hold a reserve often on developers' site plan agreements. And on a couple of occasions, we have had to, in fact, complete the site plan using those funds that are in reserve. When do we do that inspection to make sure that, if they, if it calls for 10 tree plantings, to ensure that those indeed are there and healthy?
Thank you, and through you, Mayor Patterson. So when those inspections take place, or at the point in time when requests for security reductions are submitted by the applicant, and associated with those applications for reductions have to be a certificate of completion or compliance. And, and those are submitted with respect to vegetation by the landscaper, if it's something to do with the building, maybe the architect or the civil engineer associated with the project. So when we receive those requests, and, and normally you'll see maybe a 50 or 60% reduction, the city holds 10% for at least a year beyond the time of, of the substantial completion of the project. Each of those intervals, when we receive a security request reduction, staff go out to do the inspection to ensure that the work that the applicant is saying is complete, is actually completed to the satisfaction of the municipality and in accordance with our legal agreements. So it's, it's usually happening multiple times before all of the funds are returned in terms of the securities associated with the particular development.
So if I understand you right, then it's usually triggered by the developer asking for their money back. Do, do we actually go out and inspect to make sure that the site plan is complete, or is it always triggered by the, the developer?
So it's typically triggered through the process of security release, because as you can imagine, an applicant doesn't want the municipality holding what sometimes is hundreds of thousands of dollars longer than we need to if the work is complete. I think your question is, if there's a delay when a site plan is, is being completed, or if there's a prolonged period of time from which we haven't received a security request, I think what we have been trying to do, in particular, within this term of council, is a lot of proactive work clearing the backlog of site plan deficiencies and being more proactive. And in that case, there's been more active enforcement in a bit of a additional rigor to our approach than what was probably seen in previous terms of council. But it's something that we're always working on within the resources that we have within the department.
I appreciate that. I, I know that, and I won't name names here, but I know that there's one particular developer that years.
I have, I have a number of other, other people on the questions. So just wondering, is that a preamble to another question?
Is that typical, or is that a kind of outlier?
Thank you. And if I, if I heard your question, I think it was about a protracted period of time for site plan, and is that typical?
Yeah.
I would say it's fairly atypical, because similar to the previous comment I made, the majority of people that are developing properties do not want the city holding large letters of credit or funds associated with that property for any longer than they have to. And they're usually working to have whatever materialized on that site is needed, so that they can start to generate some income associated with it. So there usually is a sense of urgency or expediency to their completion. However, sometimes we do see people dragging their heels on that last 10 or 15% of work. And those are the things we've been more proactive on, on keeping an inventory of those and doing proactive follow-up, which historically, the city has not done very well. So it is, it is a newer practice, and it's something that we're continuously refining to address those concerns of, of the last, you know, sort of push to get to that 100%.
I appreciate that. My final question, we, we may all recall, and we were reminded of this, with some letters and some delegation statements, but we passed unanimously a heritage tree program, and in fact, named two trees in that. And I think that was a little over a year ago. Where are we at, at actually making those defined as heritage trees? So that may be a question, a heritage question, and I'm just wondering if it's gone, if it's gone to the Heritage Committee yet, or if it's in the works?
Ms. Campbell?
Thank you, and through you, I have trouble with my own mute. You are correct, Counselor Neil. It was in September of 2021 that the motion was passed, that Kingston would participate in the Heritage Tree Program. That Heritage Tree Program does not automatically map onto a process of heritage designation under the Ontario Heritage Act. So staff did follow the direction of council in terms of sharing that information as directed, and also letting community members know of, of our participation in that program as a mechanism of commemoration for those trees. However, there was no direction to pursue designation under Part IV of the Ontario Heritage Act. And as a result, no designations were brought forward to Heritage Kingston at this time. So the, the motion dealt specifically with the, the program and not with the designation opportunities that could be afforded under the Ontario Heritage Act.
So I'm going to jump in on this one, Counselor Neil.
Yeah.
That question go, because I thought it was enough connected to the report. But to be honest, now we're getting into something that is different from the information report that's in front of us. So I'm not suggesting you may not have more questions and follow-up, but I am going to ask that you, you put those, or you can ask those questions online, or we can bring it to you.
It's okay. Perhaps we need a new motion that will give that direction, because there are a number of cities that, in fact, do have that policy at, in work. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next is Counselor Ostroff.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. Just a quick question, a couple of calls today related to the tree canopy comments. Will the Rural Advisory be kept informed of that, and any, any plantings in the rural area? Will that come through Rural Advisory?
Thank you, and through you, Mayor Patterson. Thanks, Counselor Ostroff. I think that it's a good point, and, and I think it's important that we do provide that information to the Rural Advisory Committee. I think there's always value in that, and, and we've seen that with some other things. So yeah, we'll certainly make sure that happens.
Yeah, thank you very much. It'll be important for us. Thank you.
Next is Counselor Chappelle.
Thank you, your worship. I just want some clarification. If I have a woodlot, and I'm looking to build or, or, you know, utilize that property for development of some sort, can I go to the Engineering Department and get a permit to cut down emerald ash trees and dead trees without having to go to Forestry Department?
Chris?
Thank you, and through you, your worship. So I'm not sure I can actually answer that, that question, Counselor Chappelle. It's an interesting question, but I'll be happy to take that back and consult with my engineering team regarding that question and get back to you if that's satisfactory.
The reason I asked that.
I'm just gonna, I'll just give Mr. Park an opportunity to jump in as well.
Okay. I didn't see his hand, sorry.
Mr. Park?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In, in response to Counselor Chappelle's question, and to save Commissioner Joyce a bit of time, the, the tree bylaw does exempt emerald ash and dead trees from any permitting process. So they could be cut down without a permit.
And so my, my question then follows up onto that as supplemental would be, so in theory, a developer can cut down trees in addition to the dead and the emerald ash, before the Forestry Department comes in to assess the tree evaluation of that said lot. So how do we tighten up that tree bylaw to ensure that only dead trees or emerald ash are actually harvested, and large white pine and 80, 60 years old are not cut down? How do we do that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. As any part, part of any development where there is trees on the property, the, going through the, the planning process, the applicant does have to submit a tree inventory. And on that inventory, it has to identify any trees that are over 15 centimeters caliber. They, within that tree inventory, if it is an emerald ash, it would be identified as that species, or if it was identified as a dead tree, it would be identified as being dead. Those trees can be removed. Anything beyond that cannot be removed without a permit.
Okay, so in theory, and I can give the example, you can get the permit to cut down the dead trees, and then apply for your permit after you've removed the dead trees, emerald ash, and the additional white pine trees, before actually getting your assessment. And it has happened, and I don't want to get into it tonight, but how do we stop that, that abuse of power that the developers are utilizing to remove trees?
Mr. Agnew?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor. There are, we do have the ability to find applicants that remove trees illegally. The, the tree value is, is calculated based on the species and size of the tree, and the applicant, or sorry, the, the property owner that removes the tree, if they did it without a permit, can be fined that amount.
As an offside, as, as, I won't do it in public, but Mr. Park, could we please follow up with me as to the fines that were assessed to that one particular proposal that I, that you know I'm talking about?
Yes, absolutely, Counselor Chappelle. I'm familiar with that one, and myself, and Mr. Connors from Forestry would be glad to meet with you on that one.
Thank you very much.
Hey, Mayor Patterson, and through you, perhaps to Ms. Agnew or Mr. Park, on the note of the charts within the report, where it says what has been cut down in terms of number of trees beyond the 15 centimeter, centimeter DBH, and the ones planted, are the ones planted of equal girth as the ones cut down? Or I could ask it in this way, are all the ones listed as planted at least 15 centimeters DBH?
Mr. Agnew?
I think you, and through you, it, it depends. So there's, there's, there's a couple of different ways, depending on the scenario that the trees are being cut down, under which process that determine the, the ratio of, of replacement, whether it's one-for-one, or whether it's two-for-one, or in some cases, if we're using the, the aboriculture calculation, which considers a whole bunch of factors and then generates a value. So that typically what, what our bylaw speaks to now is that the value of the trees are $350 per tree. I would actually need probably Ms. Tucci to speak to what that represents, that $350 tree represents, from a, from a Public Works perspective, from a replanting perspective. I wouldn't say that it's a, it's a match for match, this caliper, that the overall associated value is captured, but it doesn't mean that if it's like a 20 caliber tree that's taken down, that it's replaced with exactly the same tree and species?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yeah, that's correct. We do plant different calibers of trees, depending on what's there. But, but those larger calibers of trees, we're not going to be able to replace those with the same size. In that case, we will put in at least one tree, if not more, to, to make up for them.
Guess what I'm getting at, and I don't want to pontificate either. So I'll ask those a question, is, is it fair to say that some of the trees planted would not equal the value of the trees cut down? Is it an apples-to-oranges comparison to have those two numbers side by side?
You're testing my knowledge of the tree bylaw, Counselor. So I would say that could be true. I think where there's a circumstance that's associated with a development that's done through site plan versus plan of subdivision, where there's prescribed ratios of the one-to-one or two-for-one, depending on the, the condition of the tree. But when you get into looking at the But when you get into looking at the the aboriculture calculation, it does calculate things differently and that's usually used for for trees that are larger of a healthier special nature. So one tree of that of of a larger side size could require eight to ten trees replaced, you know, or put in its place. But you know, you're talking about a mature tree versus trees that will take time to grow. So eventually the idea is they are a fair value for one another, but recognizing the the fact that you're not putting in, you know, a huge mature tree that would be comparable. You're going to have eight to ten trees of of a smaller, healthier size that have to have time to grow to do that replacement is basically how the formula works overall.
But to get the trees to that size, it's not just the cost of the tree, but there is the ongoing maintenance that's done on those trees and inspection. So definitely in the first three to five years, there's a significant amount of time that goes into making sure those trees remain healthy. So that that also gets incorporated into some of that cost.
Okay, thanks very much supplemental. Final question for me, recognizing the complexity of how we calculate values with trees and what we commodify natural assets as, I think that's all well and good. However, I'm wondering if we can have updated numbers that would show trees cut above the fifteen centimeter DBH versus trees planted above the fifteen centimeters DBH. In other words, could we please take out any trees that are below that diameter to see the comparison in that way?
Thank you councillor. I I would have to take that question away. I I think it's something that Commissioner Joyce and I can can look at. Specifically, I couldn't speak to it tonight in detail, but I think it's something that we can take away as a follow up and and provide some additional information to council.
That'd be excellent. We'll follow up. Thank you.
Thank you. So moving on, report number four, Emergency Management Program Review 2021. We have no information reports, members of council. We have no miscellaneous business. We do have one new motion moved by councillor Ossanik, seconded by councillor Hill, where a city council has identified active transportation and safe school zones as a strategic in its strategic plan 2019 to 2022. Whereas the city is currently undertaking a review of all school areas that could be designated as formal community safety zones. Whereas a recent fatal accident on Lancaster Drive has raised concerns and the desire to fast track the implementation of various solutions to improve student pedestrian safety around schools. Where solutions to improve student pedestrian safety around schools need to include a number of partners that all have responsibilities related to student safety. Therefore, be resolved that city council direct staff to establish a school pedestrian safety working group comprised of representatives from school boards and parent councils of those school boards, Kingston police, city staff and a city councillor. And the city's transportation services department worked with the school pedestrian safety working group to consider solutions including increased use of crossing guards and or pedestrian crossings. And that a report of the recommendations be presented to the city's environment, infrastructure and transportation policies committee in Q2 2022. And this also direct staff to replace the no stopping road signs on Lancaster Drive in front of Mother Teresa Catholic School and Lancaster Drive Public School with larger no stopping road signs as an immediate measure to enhance visibility of existing patients in place. And that staff hire a school crossing guard for the intersection of Lancaster Drive and Limestone Drive as an interim measure for the remainder of the school year to address community requests to enhance the safety of students crossing at this location during school arrival in specific. Councillor Ossanik, you have the floor.
Thank you, your worship. Through you, this motion is asking to strike a working group to look at pedestrian safety at our schools. Safety is everyone's responsibility. It's the board of educations, the cities, the parents picking up and dropping off their children and the school bus drivers who navigate through a lot of commotion at the front and back of the schools trying to get the our children in and out of the loading areas each and every day. A representative from the Kingston Police Force will be sitting on this working group. I am expecting that the director of each board of education will sit on this group. Last night, I was asked by a parent if the working group could include a representative from the Kingston Coalition of Active Transportation. You might have, you might remember with all the delegations that we had last night. We did have Roger Healy of KCAT speak to us and about the success of active transportation at Winston Churchill Public School and how they've been closing off the road. So the working group would definitely be allowed to invite KCAT to be on the committee as well. We haven't had a working group like this before, to the best of my knowledge. I think it's a very important working group to strike right now and we need all stakeholders at the table. Not every school may have pedestrian safety concerns to bring to this working group. However, for those schools that do, I think the discussion from this working group will help resolve various issues, whether they be common issues seen at most of the schools or site specific problems. Most notably at Mother Teresa and Lancaster Drive Public School that are side by side. This motion also asks for a crossing guard at Lancaster and Limestone Drive, which is a four-way intersection east of the schools. Currently, the schools don't have a crossing guard. I'm asking council to please support the hiring of a crossing guard at the east side. I have two questions to staff. The first one through your worship is how does a parent council in the city request to be part of this working group?
Mr Joyce.
Thank you and through you, Mayor Patterson. Thanks councillor Ossanik. So the the parent councils will be involved and and I had both Director Semple and myself had a very good meeting with the two primary school boards last Friday. It was a meeting that was set up actually three days after the tragic death of Sochi. And it was a good meeting. I did inquire to them about how we would involve the parent councils. They've asked that they would look after that. They they have parent councils and they have a central parent council, so to speak. I can't remember the exact structure or what they call it, but they have a mechanism for that. And so the intent would be to leave it with the school boards on how that would, how the parent councils would be involved into this working group. And then how the individual parent councils would feed into that, what's that mechanism, what that would look like. But they seem to already have those mechanisms in place at at both of those school boards. And and we'll have the same discussion with the the other two French school boards as well as we invite them on.
Okay, thank you. My second question is, last night, we heard several of the delegations talk about or try to request a crossing guard on the west side of the school at Dunham, at Dunham Street. And I just wondered if staff could comment on on the potential necessity of putting a crossing guard there and like how that could come about.
Mr Semple.
Thank you and through you, Mr Mayor. Thank you councillor Ossanik for your question. The city has, the city has a process that we use for crossing guard assessments for any requests that come in. However, in this situation, I think it's important that we look at all of the information and I think you heard through some of what the parents presented last night and some of what the other delegations presented, the need to look at the situation holistically to determine the the best, I think, approaches that could be put in place, you know, either from an infrastructure standpoint or from a program standpoint that could that could work in that area. Before prescribing individual solutions, we would want to look at the area as a whole. That so that means we wouldn't just look at the frontage of the school. We would look and consider the intersections in the area in around, in and around both of those schools and any of the the patterns and travel patterns of the students that that would factor into that. So I I I think as it relates to that particular location, we I don't have any updated information or study information as it relates to the, as it relates to a crossing guard at that particular spot. But certainly that would be looked at as part of the the review that would be underway and the discussions that would happen at the at the the working group.
Thank you. Thank you for the comments. I want to acknowledge the tragic and heartbreaking accident that occurred at Mother Teresa two weeks ago. As the district councillor for Collins Bay Ridge, I want to extend my condolences to the Rivera family. Through the results of the traffic investigation and the working groups effort to bring recommendations to council by the end of June, further improvements can be made. I'm hoping that council will support this motion and thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is councillor.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. And I do want to thank the councillors and everyone involved for this motion. And we all grieve the loss of Sochi Rivera and it's too much to bear really for everyone, but we I would like to ask Mr Semple. And I appreciate his work. Not much mention has been made of other schools that would also be able to share, you know, concerns. And I have Elginburg School and I'd be remiss not to mention that. And I appreciate Mr Semple's attention and staff. And I'm just wondering if he would be able to just speak to that, that all schools with with similar issues that we're talking about will 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 be looked at. And the one focus they've been asked me to ask you about is sidewalks. And is that something that you actively look at? And will see how that works and connects to the solving the problems?
Through through you, Mr Mayor. Thank you councillor Ossanik for your for your questions. What I can I can say is since the accident, we've heard from, it just in my last review, many parents from from, we've heard from many parents from more than fourteen different schools, including Elginburg Public School. The issues that have been shared, some of them are, you know, are known to us and have been brought up previously. Others were brought up by parents just, I think in light of their you know, closer look at what might be going on in and around their child's schools. So we 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 take all of those concerns that come in and staff from the transportation team work with the schools, work with our other partners, both internally and externally to gather information and look at what solutions can be put in place. It can include things like sidewalks, so infrastructure changes. And but it also can include education and program elements, some of which, you know, are part of council's strategic priorities and have been, you know, sort of been in development since 2019. But but it includes that whole range of of pieces. It also includes partnerships, one of which you heard about last night from from KCAT in in their work that they want to do in the community and the way that the city can support that with, you know, with information or with support that they need to be able to operate those programs. So we're we're aware of the the other concerns that have been been raised. The the issues at each school are, it is not the same issue at every school. They are all, they all are unique in some some capacity. And we would look at what is required at each of those locations as part of our normal review. The I think the with the school pedestrian safety working group, that will also, I think, assist in having those discussions with the school boards and the other stakeholders to, I think, understand what what aspects they can bring to the discussion as as councillor Ossanik noted in the way that we can approach the problems as partners in a more holistic way.
I really, really appreciate that in your comments. Thank you.
Okay, next is councillor Hill.
Well, thank you. I want to thank councillor Ossanik for bringing this forward. This is like, you know, I was a principal. This is every principal's worst nightmare and, you know, like a really unspeakable tragedy. And it impacts on so many people, you know, obviously we're hearing from lots of parents, you know, very, very concerned about the safety of their children. And it's impacted on Sochi's friends and obviously that her family is devastated, you know, that her her friend, her teachers at the school and everybody who was involved in that, all of our EMS workers. So, you know, I think what this work will do is 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 be a bit of a legacy for Sochi's life. It was short, but maybe it's going to make a real contribution to the betterment of our community and the safety of our kids going forward. And, you know, I I I really recall in my time as principal that, you know, this was a a concern always. Because it's not a simple, it's not a simple answer. And I although I really think that the measures that councillor Ossanik has asked for specific to this site are are important to get us through to the end of this school year. Even with the folks that spoke last night, you heard some differences of opinion because because it is a, it is a complex issue. It's not simply a a matter of infrastructure. It's not simply a matter of education, parent information, more staff. There's there are so many related issues when it comes to how do we make sure that our kids are safer? One of the things that, you know, and I've heard from every school in in my district, where I have six elementary schools and a high school. And I've heard from them all and parents very concerned. And one of the things that we've seen even during this pandemic is the inclination gone up dramatically of parents to bring their kids to school, which has changed the the, you know, congestion around the schools. That's just one element of it though. And, you know, I I, some of the councillors around the table are old enough to remember safety programs that that took place in schools, like it was, I think, Elmer the Safety Elephant, if I recall, was about school safety and about how kids can get to school safely. And I don't think that program exists anymore. And so it's it's things like, you know, you know, what do we need to do in conjunction with our partners? So the school boards are obviously one. The police would have a real, you know, ability to provide some input into this. What kind of infrastructure issues need to be addressed? What are the unique as Director Semple has said, what are the unique issues that, you know, we have at different schools? It's a it it, but it is much more complex than simply saying, you know, the city should do this. And if the city did that, then this problem would be resolved. So I think the working group is 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 really, really important aspect of this. I think the working group will have the opportunity to really take a a a broad view of this issue. Because times have changed, you know, our circumstances are significantly different now than they were ten years ago and when I was a principal even. So, you know, it I I all I can, all I can say is I think we, out of this terrible tragedy, we have an opportunity to to try to make sure that our kids get to school safely, that we've done everything that we can in conjunction with all of our partners to make sure that that happens. And I think that would be a significant legacy for Sochi and her family to leave to this community. And I certainly offer any support that I can to to assist in this task. So again, thank you to councillor Ossanik for bringing this forward and I will obviously be supporting it.
Thank you. Next is councillor.
Your worship, I I don't think there's anything I can add to the elegant words that councillor Hill was made. I'll leave it at that. That this this motion fully has my support. And I certainly appreciate the fact that schools like in Westbrook, Holbrook Public School, they don't have a sidewalk and they have ditches and hopefully that may be addressed as well through this this working group. I'll definitely support supporting whatever needs.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Okay, we will call the vote on new motion one. All those in here opposed? And that's good. Okay, we have no other new motions. Notice this emotion. I have a notice of motion. I'm not going to read it for maiden, but I will paraphrase. It's will be moved by myself, seconded by councillor Kylin. In consultation with and with the support, Kingston's medical officer of health, Dr Oglaza. At at our March first meeting, I will be bringing forward motion to To move council back to in-person meetings starting March the twenty second. Which would mark exactly two years since we first moved to virtual meetings. There will also be some direction for staff to then come up with a plan about what would then happen with. Other committee meetings and everything else other than council. So that's. Are there any other notices of motion? Okay, with that, Madam Deputy Clerk, I'll ask for minutes.
Moved by Counselor Chappelle, seconded by Counselor Kylie, that the minutes of city council meeting number five dash twenty twenty two, till Tuesday, February first, twenty twenty two be confirmed.
All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. We have some communications. Lots of communications. Is there any other business? I'll ask for bylaws.
Thank you. Before we proceed, I just wanted to point out that bylaws two, three and four have been withdrawn as the. With the in accordance with the deferral of the nuisance party by law matter. Counselor Neil, you are excused for the reading of by law, for the two readings for bylaw seven. Okay, moved by Council McLaren, seconded by Counselor Ossanic, that bylaw seven be given its first and second reading. Moved by Council McLaren, seconded by Counselor Ossanic, that bylaw seven be given its third reading. Counselor Neil, you may return. Moved by Counselor McLaren, seconded by Counselor Ossanic, that bylaws one, five, six and eight be given their first and second reading. Moved by Council McLaren, seconded by Counselor Ossanic, that clause twelve point six three of bylaw number twenty twenty one dash forty one be suspended for the purpose of giving bylaws one, five and six three readings. And finally, bylaws one and five, six and eight be given their third reading.
Motion adjourned, please. Neil, seconded by Counselor Osterhoff. All those in favor? Your adjourn. Have a good night, everybody.